Today is March 17, 2022. The time is 10:02. This is a community development special meeting agenda.
Chris, microphone?
It's on.
Oh, there. I'm sorry. This is a special meeting agenda to consider a complaint by one of our residents, Mr. Joe Rogiri. And attending, as I said, our commissioners Duncan Brooks and Philly Oss. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. One business item. It's a building permit review process. It's a discussion. And so Joe Rogiri, of course, everyone, some of you have had interaction. Maybe you all have with Joe. What I'm going to do, Joe, is let you know who's present so you know you have an idea. So Leslie Duncan, Bill Brooks, and I are the three commissioners. David Callahan, who directs our community development. Christina, who basically runs our building inspection. We also have Ben Tarbutton, who manages our planners. We have Craig and George, who are both code enforcers. And one other gentleman.
My name's Bobby Washburn. I'm with the Building Department also.
Okay. And Bobby Washburn is with us as well, who's with the Building Department. So everyone is here who can address your concerns. What I'm going to do, Joe, is rather than I restating your concerns, I'll let you do that. How's that? Will that work?
That'd be great. Yes.
Okay. Go right ahead, Joe.
And I apologize for the miscommunication. I was actually, I was going to call you yesterday, but I got so busy that I forgot. But I apologize for the miscommunication. I was waiting to hear back from you on whether or not the seven teeth worked. But anyways, with that said, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to address the board, or speak to the board. My concerns are with the building process. As you, just kind of bring everybody up to speed that may not be aware of what happened last year. I started, I purchased property in Tootsie County off of Highway 53 and Chase Road, and which is on the west side of Lathrum, directly across from the fueling depot for BNSF railroad. I purchased that property in October of 2020. In January of 2021, I hired the services of a drafting company, an engineering company, to draw up plans for a coffee or latte stand that I had had built. It took me a little over a year to build. Anyways, I had done draw up plans for that. Before, when I was applying for the permits, I spoke to a very nice lady, Mary, I can't remember Mary's last name.
Mary Shaw.
Thank you, Mary Shaw. Really, really nice lady. I spoke to Mary and said, hey, Mary, what do we need to do from a building, you know, for a site permit and for a building permit? And we had a, I can't remember what it was called, a preliminary review or whatever. When I was talking to Mary, I said, okay, I know I have to have drawings for the, for the stand for a builder to build, but what about the site plan? And do I need, and can I just draw up a drawing by hand? And she said, yes, at the time. I didn't have to go to an engineering company to have it drawn up. But this is what I needed. I needed a narrative. I needed, you know, kind of a hand-drawn plan of what I wanted to do. Keep it in mind, of course, this is a 13 by 26 coffee stand. So it's, it's not much bigger than most of your bedrooms, I would imagine. It's a very small stand. Anyway, so we talked about it. She said, okay, this is what you need to do. Then the review me. Then I went into the process of, okay, now I'm applying for the permits. I go to apply for the permits, come to find out that, that there's a lot more involved, a lot more cost involved, because now I have to have an engineer do this. Go ahead. Did somebody say something?
No.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. I had to go to an engineering company to do the site plan, because the county required a engineer's signature, engineering drawings with an engineer's signature on the site plan, which cost me, oh, almost $9,000 to do. And so I had, I said, okay, crap. So I spent the money, had a site plan drafted up, and sent to the county. In the review process, again, I didn't know this, but in the review process, as I was told going in, in the review process, not only did I need a site plan, I needed to have a landscaping engineer do landscaping for this. That cost me another six grand, just to have a landscape engineer add five bushes and six trees to the, to the plan. That cost me another, almost $400 or $500, okay, to have that done. Again, I was never informed that I needed to do that until we were in the review process. Then they came back and said, oh, you need this in addition to. I'm like, oh, okay. You know, that, that stinks. Again, I'm, I'm funding this whole thing myself, you know, for my, my life savings. I was just trying to build a small family business, and now the costs are starting to really add up because of these building requirements that are, in my opinion, not applicable. Again, this is a small 13 by 26 coffee stand on the corner of a lot in a rural area, basically. So anyway, so I go and get the, get the landscaping part added to it. Then we go through the whole process of back and forth between the designer and the reviewer of the drawings at the Building Department. And my design draftsman and engineer would send something in. The reviewer would say, would say, okay, you need this, this, and this added to the drawings. Okay? So we did that. We made the changes that, that were required. We sent it in, and the engineer on the county side would, would say, or the review person would say, now you need this, this, and this. And it's like, well, why didn't you tell us that in the first place? Every time I have to go back to these engineers and draftsmen, it's costing me tons of money. So there's a complaint there, that, you know, we need to, we need to kind of fix that process. First, I need to, I think it should be better defined what's required going in. And when you send in reviews, I think it should be a one-time, you send it in, this is what you need to add, or whatever, and then that should be it. That wasn't the case. We actually went through like three separate iterations of that. And then I get to the, then I get to the building part of it. And I'm doing construction, get the inspections. The county had an inspector working the job that was actually really easy to work with. Because it was such a small project, he said, you know what, when you get this phase done, just give me a call, and I'll come and do the inspection. And he did like three or four of my inspections. And I went to go call him for the final inspection, and come to find out that he no longer works at the county. And the county inspector that came out looked like, wow, you know, he didn't, he was trying to run his own little company, and blah, 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 blah. And see, he shouldn't have said this, he should have had to do this, and do this, and do this. But it's too late. I've already got the walls on. And, you know, and I was told that I didn't need any other inspection until the final inspection. So anyways, I called it, so the inspector comes out, does the final inspection, and he fails me on points that he couldn't even tell me why he failed me. And it's like, okay, how do I determine that? Well, you have to go back to Christina. And Christina would say, okay, this is what you, you know, the spec says you've got to have a certain kind of paint, you've got to have a certain kind of finish on your floor, et cetera, et cetera. I'm like, oh, okay. How, how can you fail me when you didn't even know what's requiring it was? And by the way, I did use that paint, and I did use that floor covering. So again, what, he failed me for points that, or parts of the project that I didn't, that I did need spec. So I had a problem with that. Let me come along. Now we're, now we're in the final inspection process or whatever, and the Post Falls Highway Commission shows up and says, oh, your entrance is, is not acceptable. They signed off on the drawings, or they, they signed off on the plans that the county was kind of facilitating and controlling. But they came back and said, oh, no, the entrance has got to be moved north on the property. It's got to go back another 400 feet on the property. And I'm like, okay, so that cost me $17,000 to have a driveway extension put on, not to the plant. So all of these, all of these surprises, okay, just caused me to, to spend so much more additional money than I had budgeted to build the stand, that now I have to actually, I had to almost dial bankruptcy, because I couldn't, I could go back to the county and get additional money to, to build it. And $40,000 of that, after meeting with my accountant and my attorney, were due to the county, what I call them, non-expected surprises. And the county answer was, you know, you didn't build it right, and I've got $300,000 worth of receipts to show that I did build it right, to spec. But the, the $40,000 was in, just in delays with the county, and then surprising that, oh, I didn't know I needed that, okay, but I do need that. So I've got to, you know, write a check for 5,000 year, for 10,000 year, 15,000 or 17,000 year. And so as a, as a concerned business owner, it's, we've got to fix that. We've got to make it so there aren't these surprises.
Okay. Joe, can I, can I now turn it over to our folks so they can at least try to respond to you?
Sure.
Okay. David, would you like to start, sir?
Well, I'll take one thing off the plate. We can do nothing about Post Falls Highway District. That's completely their decision. I'm sorry if they actually caused a problem, but we can't help that. All of the other things, I believe, we have an answer to. And I'll ask Chief Building Official Christina Garland and Planning Manager Ben Tarbutton to hit some specifics, but I'll just open up to-
Can I interrupt just for a second?
Go ahead, Joe.
If you, if you guys have no control over the Post Falls Highway District, then why have they included in the, in the process?
Because we must. We have no choice. They are part of the review process, and they are their own separate political subdivision of the state.
Yeah. It's no choice, Joe. We have to include them. Their, their affect-
Oh, no, I think, okay, I understand that, but if you, if you don't have any authority or any control, then shouldn't it just be that, you, Mr. Builder, you, Mr. Business Owner, have to work directly with them?
Just that we don't advise the person that their dealings with them are separate and apart from us. We do. Okay. And Mary Shaw would be the person to make that unambiguously clear. It's unlike Mary, who's no longer with us, to not explain these things from the very beginning in detail. So with that, I'd like to ask Christina or Ben to lead off with what they know about this.
Okay. Who wants to go first? Christina? Oh, Ben? Go ahead.
Hi, Joe. Ben Tarbutton here.
Hi, Ben.
Hey, just wanted to start with kind of, from the standpoint of what we've received and when we received it. So based on the initial contact that we've had, we received a site disturbance permit application from you on March, March 1st, I believe, yeah, March 1st, 2021. Part of the application submittal included a site disturbance plan prepared by Rob Tate, your, your engineer. That plan was stamped February 25th, 2021. So what, what that means to me is that before you actually submitted a permit, making the first contact with us, you had already reached out with Rob Tate to design a commercial-developed property, the latte stand. And so a site disturbance plan was prepared by your design professional, and correctly so, because it is commercial development. The code does require a site disturbance plan to be prepared by a design professional. So that was the right step moving forward, and he did so correctly. And so not until after you had submitted the site disturbance plan was it determined by staff in the initial review that a special notice permit was going to be required because it is commercial zone property and it is fronting Highway 53. And so that's kind of how it was coordinated with Mary Shaw in getting that special notice permit set up. And so according to the record, it looks like you were aware that a design professional was required because that was provided well before and in concert with the application. Now Sarah Roop, who was the site disturbance plan reviewer, she picked up the review three weeks after it was submitted, and in her review, she emailed you and said, hey, you know what? This is commercial development. Landscaping, parking requirements are a standard for commercial development, and it was not included in your submittal. And that happens from time to time, where a designer will provide us information, but yet not meet all the requirements. And so we have corrections, and that's just part of the review process. And so because Rob Tate and his company did not provide us the information, you know, certainly we'd expect that he would know that, but it's not our responsibility to assure that he, ensure that he does. And so that's kind of the review process, letting him know. And so we followed up with you and Rob Tate and Brody Cohn from Tate Engineering, just kind of informing you that, look, here are some corrections that we need for the site disturbance side of things. Now, as a result of the review there, getting the revised plan back from Tate and so on, all of the agencies responded in support at the time. And then on May 19th, that site disturbance permit was issued. And so that's kind of what I know as far as the site disturbance side of things. From that point, of course, we get into the building permit, and I think Chris can kind of take the building permit on from there, but I'm assuming I will probably jump back in due to some of the concerns that you brought up with the Highway District and the access changing as a result. And because the access had changed, our approved site disturbance plan was no longer consistent with that change. And so that's what forced a revised plan to be submitted. But again, that was a little bit later on, so I'll let Chris kind of pick up here with the, the building permit.
Commissioners, if I may just interject before Christina jumps in, Rob Tate has done hundreds of plans with us over the eight years that I've worked for the county. It's hard for me to accept that he didn't bother to look at the commercial code when he knows better than most engineers in the county that these things would apply. But that's what happened. Christina?
Hi, Mr. Rogiri. So you submitted your permit application dated March 17th of 2021. The permit tech took hold of this permit for completeness. They approved within roughly about a week's time, March 24th. It essentially went to the plan's examiner for a review. They reviewed it within a matter of a few days, working days, April 3rd, which was returned for corrections, and which did have, I believe, 11 corrections for the designer. And let, let me just back up really quickly. So the code requires that any commercial project be designed by a licensed architect and a licensed engineer. We forego the licensed architect, excuse me, due to, because it was a small project. So essentially, you didn't have to pay for a licensed architect. You went to a designer, and we allowed that. So back to the plan review. The second, the submittal for the corrections for the plan review, the revisions were submitted April 26th. Bob Anchorsmith reviewed it May 1st, and again, returned it for corrections. Some of the items that you mentioned regarding adding additional comments to the original comment letter, we did end up having to because some of the documents weren't subpoenaed, say, for instance, the mechanical. There were no mechanical design, which Bob Anchorsmith did actually ask for. And so when we did get those reviews, they were incorrect. That's why there was a second correction comment for those. So the correction, the second correction letter was sent, and Bob Anchorsmith also called the designer and discussed the corrections. On the third submittal for building review was submitted May 11th. Bob reviewed it May 13th, and again, returned it for corrections. Some of the items still were not corrected per the original correction letter. A fourth review was submitted and completed on May 13th, which we did end up approving it with conditions because the mechanical wasn't completed yet. We finally issued the building permit on May 19th. So moving on to the inspection process. So your first inspection was May 20th, or requested May 20th. We did perform the inspection on May 24th, which failed due to a couple of items that were not correct, and the building plans weren't on site. The code requires that you have to have a complete set of plans on site. The inspector was able to look at it with the iPad, so he performed the inspections and asked for corrections. The inspector returned the next day and passed your footings. Your next inspection was requested for the stem wall on June 2nd. The inspection was performed on June 7th, which was passed. Your next inspection was a slab installation requested June 15th, was performed June 16th and passed. Your stem wall inspection was requested July 13th and was performed July 20th. The notes indicated our inspector went on site and found a note to say that you canceled the inspection. So we essentially made a trip out there when a simple phone call could have been made. You requested another shear inspection July 20th. We performed it on July 26th with a partial pass requesting engineering revisions. Your framing inspection was requested October 11th, was performed October 19th and passed. And at that time, we were still waiting for engineering from the shear wall inspection. Your air seal was done the same day, requested October 19th and performed October 19th. We also had a mechanical roughen, which was requested November 3rd, performed November 18th and passed. And we finally get down to the final inspection. So we typically do a final mechanical and a final building at the same time, but your mechanical contractor requested it done prior to that. He requested it December 30th. We performed it January 6th and failed it. Then we did finally do a final building inspection January 6th, and we performed it January 11th and failed. And we did, anytime we result a inspection, the system automatically sends you an email regarding what the corrections are. So we have all those email logs in the file indicating what those corrections were, excuse me. We finally did a secondary final building inspection, requested January 13th and passed it January 7th, or January 20th, excuse me. So I have.
Sir? I'm doing my math correctly.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear-
We talked about each one of the inspections, and there was a minimum of seven days between calling for inspection and getting inspection. When you're working with contractors on a small project like this, those delays cost a fortune, because the contractors are there during their job, and it's a small job, so, and unfortunately, that's showing me the only time you can get damage, when, when they're done, it's like, okay, we'll, we need to get inspection. Waiting a week or better cost me a lost opportunity cost, basically. And so, and that's why, one of my biggest arguments is, is that the county doesn't look at the particulars of the job. They just look at it as, okay, these are the standards, these are the inspections we have to do, without looking at the particulars. This is a 13 by 26-foot coffee stand. And so you're looking at over eight weeks, hundreds of dead time for inspections. I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's acceptable.
Okay. Who wants to respond to that?
So I will. So some of your inspections did, so the footing inspection, you requested that on the 20th of May, which was a Thursday. So we don't work Saturday or Sunday, so your inspection did occur. Really, you only waited probably two working days. When you failed that inspection, you got the inspection the next day. As your first stem wall inspection, you requested it on a Wednesday, you waited two days, and you, and we did the inspection on a Monday. Slab insulation, you waited one day. Your shear inspection, yes, this was the time when we were starting to get really busy, and unfortunately, you did wait five days for this inspection. So, you know, as we go further down, we did get, we did have some longer lead times on inspections, but that was a time of the year when there are many, many requests for inspections. But just looking at the inspections and when they were performed, there, there were requested during the middle of the week. We did have a weekend, and we did perform the inspections in a timely fashion.
Okay. Well, then, I, I got a note. You weren't there, Christina, but I was there for every inspection. And all they had to do was say, this is what we need changed, and we're good. But the county didn't believe that we would do it, okay? And I thought they did some simple stuff, okay? This was some really simple stuff, okay? And so, so even that, that week delay, just, again, my biggest complaint with the county is they, they don't understand small business- with the county is they, uh, they don't understand small business and, and what the costs associated are with delays, and with not, 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 not believing, if you will, the, the, uh, small business owner or the, or the builder to say, oh, yeah, we'll take, we'll take care of that. Sorry, I didn't, you know, we missed that. We got it, okay? Uh, instead, you fail, and then we have to wait another week to, to, to come back out and do it. When we actually did it, we made the enhancements within an hour of, of, of the inspector coming out. Um, and so my, my biggest complaint with the county is, again, they don't understand the impacts, financial impacts to a small business owner building something like this, 13 by 26 coffee stand. That's my biggest complaint. Um, they view everything as a haggard on job, okay? Or a subdivision development job, okay? All these processes that we just talked about made total sense for the larger, uh, building construction projects and, uh, several, uh, subdivision development projects. They don't make sense from a small, little mom and pop shop that's being built, a coffee stand, 13 by 26 foot coffee stand.
Okay.
So if I may respond to that?
Go ahead, Christina.
So most of your inspections, I would say probably about 75% of them passed. Um, you only had a few inspections that you did fail. So your footings did fail. We came out the next day. Um, the shear inspection, uh, that you canceled, um, we came out a few days later to, uh, as per your request, which was a partial pass, but everything else passed there, so there was really no need for us to come back until you're, uh, you requested an inspection. So I, I'm, I'm not understanding that you're saying that, that we were holding you back on not getting to your inspections, um, if we failed you, and we did. Our footing inspection inspector came out the very next day to, to get you passed, and so you can pour your foundation. Um, the only ones that we did have issues were, were your, um, final mechanical and your final building.
What, what's the status of the project today?
Um, it's, uh, the building, uh, portion is passed, um, all the way through final. Um, so I believe we just have, uh, code violation fees to pay so we can issue the building permit or issue this certificate of occupancy, excuse me.
Okay. So the code violations apply to?
Craig can answer that, but Craig can answer that best, but we just agree, yep.
Joe, Craig is, uh, one of our code informers, just so you know.
Hi, Joe. Craig Davidson.
Yeah, they're really good about that. You're very quick on that.
The, the reason why I was involved is because it's, it was, you're under the operation without a certificate of occupancy. We did an initial research and investigation fee of $35, and then an inspection fee, which I inspected, so it's $115. Uh, once the finals passed, fees are paid, and correct me if I'm wrong, the certificate of occupancy can be issued and you are in compliance. And also, I want to commend you on your quick action to remove the U-Haul equipment off the lot after you determined that you weren't going to go that direction. So it's probably one of the quickest resolutions we've had, and I appreciate that.
Okay. What are we looking at for code violation fees?
One, 115.
$115?
Once that's paid, we're ready to issue the CO.
Okay. Ben, did you have anything else to add?
Um, you know, Craig mentioned, again, some of the, the U-Haul business that was added midstream, and I think that is important to, to bring up and to discuss, because when we have issued permits and approvals for a certain use and plans for a certain use, um, you know, we, we became aware of a change or an additional use that was added to the site, um, causing additional traffic, causing additional impervious area to be created. Um, as soon as we became aware of that, we looked at the special notice permit to see how that would impact our previous approval there. We felt that it was a minor modification of the original approval, and we were willing to, um, to document that, of course, but, uh, the site disturbance plan, of course, is no longer consistent with what was actually developed. And so at that time, staff said, you know, because you've gone beyond what has been approved, and you've added additional impervious area, there's stormwater requirements, um, you know, please, please provide a revised, uh, site disturbance plan. And, um, and so that was through the course of, of going back and forth with some revisions there and the revisions as a result of the change of the approach, um, we eventually did come to a conclusion and approved the revised plan. You decided, um, that it would be in your best interest to just go ahead and remove the U-Haul business, and as Craig mentioned, um, I think you, you took care of that rather swiftly. And so, again, keeping the plan specifically to just the coffee stand. Um, but again, when, when we have an approval and things are different on site, it causes staff to have to, um, look at other revisions, um, and unfortunately, that does require you to go back to your engineer, um, and, you know, if there's additional fees, then that's, that's just part of the, their business, I suppose, but-
Okay. Are you done, Ben?
Yeah, I'm finished with that.
Okay. Leslie, Phil, any thoughts?
Uh, well, my question is, um, the April 3rd, the plan corrections there were 11 mentioned. So were there any other additional than those original 11 that, um, because I know it says that it was returned second, third, fourth time, um, but were those additional revisions or just part of those original 11?
They were part of the original 11, so I believe, um-
That's not true. That's not true. That, some of them were part of the original, but others were, were new.
So the, the part of the original, if you go to the first review, which was, uh, April 3rd, item number seven and eight was part of the correction that Bob Anchorsmith put in for 513. All those had to do with the requirements for the, um, the mechanical. We didn't have any mechanical to review, so when we did get it, we had to review it, and that's where those comments came from.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Bill?
I can appreciate how frustrating it is. Does the county actually have a checklist of things people have to do?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Okay. And does it include all the items that were mentioned during this?
Yes.
The problems. Okay. Well, that's important, because I can appreciate being a small business owner, uh, for a coffee stand and spending in excess of $30,000 before you, uh, sell your first latte. That's a little tough.
Leslie? You okay?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just unfortunate that, um, this happens, and I think that this is not the only one that, that happens, is, um, corrections not being submitted when they, they're asked for, um, just causes these problems and delays. But, um, I don't know, I mean, I know how overwhelmed the inspection department is and all that right now, but if there's anything we can take away from this, um, to help in the future, that would be great.
One thing that comes to mind is if we had the luxury, we could have a floating inspector that, whose job it was to just, if there really is a six or one hour, six minute, one hour fix, we circle back around, hit it, we're done.
Yeah.
That takes the luxury of time that we don't have at the moment.
Right.
But we can certainly keep that in mind.
Yeah, because you're so backed up. Yeah, okay.
The other thing, um, I would be willing to offer up, just to try and smooth over hurt feelings, since feelings are part of this and unavoidably so. Um, we have $80 in inspection fee, 35 in research. I, if you're comfortable with it, I'd just waive that, so he could get his CO and we're done.
I think that's important.
I would support that.
That's fine. Let's get it done.
Get them open. Get the business done. Certificate of occupancy, and we're, we've all learned from this, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to present to you today.
Okay. So-
We'll, we'll take care of the fees.
You're going to waive the fees, issue the CO?
Yep.
And we're done?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome. Joe, are you okay?
I am. Thank you very much, and again, I apologize, Chris, for the miscommunication.
No, 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 no problem, Joe. Maybe, yeah, it worked out. It worked out fine. Thank you for your time, Joe. Thank you, everyone else.
Thank you.
The time, the time I've got now is 11-
10:42.
10:42. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Have a good week, Thursday, but thank you.